Seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lusbruntz, Cascade Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lusbruntz.
Here.
Judge Corstang.
Yeah.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
To Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic which is founded on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, in presentations.
Yeah.
Article three, approval of tonight's agenda. A couple of things. First, there's a public hearing for Article nine, new business. That's item zero six four, twenty twenty four. An appeal for a type one special use permit located at Oak Brook Street. That public hearing was duly noticed. I just wanted to. For clarity's sake, I think we should amend tonight's agenda to reflect that item's public hearing. It will be preceding the board's discussion or decision. Secondly, we do have in presentations. Our outside engineering firm, Spalding De Decker, is here to give the board an update on the pedestrian bridge. Bikers and walkers enhancements on the Cascade Road across the Thorn Apple River. Thank you for coming tonight. Ready to get some details, but so we're going to add you guys to the presentations. Any other?
I just said move to approve with those changes.
Okay. Oh, okay. So with those two amendments, is there further discussion or a motion?
I moved to approve the agenda with the suggested changes.
Second. That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by clerk Slater to approve tonight's agenda with those two additions. So with that, Article four, presentations. Oh, all in favor?
I.
Poked. Motion carried. Article four presentation. So again, Spalding De Decker, welcome. Thanks for coming tonight and. Please proceed.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dan Troyo, Spalding De Decker.
Unfortunately.
So. The project was bid in May. And Davis Construction was the low bidder, one point two five million dollars. Heather Hendges from Davis is here sitting right behind us. Davis Construction has requested an extension of time to complete the work on the. Proposed improvements for the pedestrian enhancements. Their reasoning is industry wide shortage in pre-stress beam fabrication, which. Has delayed their production on other projects. So projects that they're supposed to be complete on. Are not complete because they're delayed due to delivery of beams. And so that's holding up their start date.
So we did our due diligence as well, and we consulted with other bridge contractors to verify that this is indeed, and we talked with M dot that this is an industry wide delay. So it's not just Davis, specific to Davis Construction. So she, the assumption was is crews would be available. To get on this job in the fall of this year to get achieve substantial completion by the end of the season. But that's not the case because she's being held up on so many other projects that she doesn't have a crews available.
So we met with Heather and Eric Thorne a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed. Options and how we should proceed. So two things came from that meeting. One, Davis Construction agreed to provide. A couple of different options for how to proceed. One option was a fall start. And partial completion and then completion in the spring. And then the second option was. Starting in the spring and twenty twenty five construction from start to finish. That schedule is included in the letter that we sent.
You have, the board has this.
So the other thing that came out of that meeting was with discussion with Eric, we, we reached out to the second bidder, which was Anlon Corporation. So their bid was one point three seven eight million. So it's.
About a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars higher than the low bit of Davis Construction.
So we also discussed scheduling options with them and they. They were offered the same opportunity to provide. Scheduling options. They also provided two schedules, one, one for a fall start. And one for a spring start.
And you're not privy to the, the chart, the CPM chart for the spring, for the fall start because they didn't want to. There's caveats that go with that. There's going to be some hurdles that we would have to quickly climb over in order to get them out there this October. Some of those would have to be getting approvals from the, the road commission. Nothing that's insurmountable, but they didn't want to publicly share that information. For some obvious reasons, there's competition with, with them and, but they did supply us with the actual schedule where they would be starting this October and they could achieve. Substantial completion with open to traffic this year, but we'd say twelve thirty one. Their schedule really says middle of December, but we'll just give it to the end of the year. And then they would have to come back next spring to complete the electrical work and with lead times on the electrical work, either in the bridge lighting. That would, that work wouldn't take place till next year regardless of who's doing the project.
So yeah, there, there are some contract revisions that are going to have to happen for both contractors. There, there, as John mentioned, there were some caveats for their, for Anlon's. October start and December open to traffic. Those changes involve some traffic control changes that would have to get approved. By Kent County. I did have a discussion with Wayne Harrell at Kent County Road Commission. I, I know some of those, based on our discussion, some of those they would approve. County, Kent County is concerned about winter maintenance with traffic control devices on the street. You know, their, their weather is the unknown there. You know, we've had snowstorms in October and November and last year. Think we were on the beach last, last December, right? So, so there's some unknowns there with, with late season construction work.
But the point is, if, if we were to be, to be able to get past some of the hurdles that we've discussed, they have available manpower to staff the project in October.
Anlon.
Anlon, so. So both contractors basically submitted a, a fall start schedule. Anlon's had, had work on the bridge complete by mid-December. I think Davis' proposal was they would do one side of the bridge and then do the other side in the spring. I think the spring completion dates were similar. The fall completion dates were different. Anlon's completion date in the fall was early June, I believe. And Davis's was mid-August. So. So basically the competing interest there are the completion dates, the time versus the contract cost. You know, just, just at the bid prices. There's. Hundred twenty six thousand dollars difference to go to the second bidder.
But and that's in the base contract. And what we didn't, we haven't mentioned yet is Anlon is willing to hold, they're under no contractual. Obligation to do so, but they are willing to hold their bid pricing, which is at the hundred and twenty six thousand dollars higher than Davis's low bid. And they've also. Previously mentioned that they would be open to discussions of cost-saving measures.
Yeah, there, there are some elements that, that we could look at. One of them, I remember specifically, we talked about right after the bid was the. Ornamental fencing that we selected on the outside, the arch on it. That was the most expensive one. There's a, there's a pretty good cost savings if we went.
Cost-saving alternatives.
Yeah. So there, he, he mentioned a couple of things, you know, we, we, we didn't explore those in depth because. Because they were number two by quite a bit. So, but those things are out there. Some of those things could be discussed with Davis as well. You know, to keep it fair, so.
And yeah.
Hi. First of all, I'm very dismayed that the safety project is long behind. This is what the residents stated that they wanted for safety of their children crossing the bridge. Secondly, I am not in favor of any construction that might. Go into the wintertime and impair the traffic in any way on that bridge. Thirdly, is the low bidder going to stand by his or her. Commitments as far as costs. I heard Anlon says that if they do it in the spring, they'll stand behind their, their bid. Does the first bidder also do that same thing? Or are they subject to additional?
They have a representative.
Well, come on up here.
It's determined to make the estimated for this project, we oversee the project management on it as well. Originally, this job was done in May. We had openings for the end of the season and we were determined to. Provide the most amount of work for our, our worker or employees as long, as long as we can get a full season. So we've got this project. Please send and invite us specifically. We've had a good working relationship with these guys in the past. So unfortunately, the, the department having some issues with the sole supplier precast beams in the state. This is out of our control. It's a quality assurance issue that the state of Michigan, the Department of Transportation is fully in charge of. As a contractor, there's nothing else we can do besides wait to see to work that out with precaster. So the crews that were scheduled to be here are, they're delayed. There's, that's the facts. The contract, we've been this job because we're going to have. Multiple local employees that live in this general area, which is a great job for them to be in the backyard. Yes, we will hold our prices. Yes, we've told Spalding De Decker that we will absorb any cold water protection costs. I'd also have proposed or discussed perfectly, not as probably as formally as maybe Anlon, but discussion sound like they're not a little further. Alternate traffic control ideas as well in order to be able to facilitate this. We just, we were, we kind of, the position that we're in at this point with the state of Michigan, looks beyond our control. I want to be just ask for a, to have a slight schedule. So until a cruiser available, so you can get a full season in.
And, and the supply chain issue she's talking about, they don't. We don't have those materials on our projects. They're affecting other projects that have, that have delayed them.
So it's affecting her availability of manpower.
Two, two major projects right now on freeways.
So I think that's my question. So. These parts aren't available. I'm going to call them parts, even though it's more than that.
For other projects.
They're, they're not a part of this safety improvement.
So they're not a part of our project, but okay, because that was my question. How do we, we keep talking about these parts, but they're not even to do with this project? Because how would this other company be able to guarantee that they can get here? It's because they have the crews available. Your availability is based that they're pushed back. All of their projects are pushed back for the year.
With the months of the crew that was going to be here, the, the two crews that were potentially available at the same time are now both delayed to, to freeway projects.
Because of this other issue. Okay.
Presumably.
They're sitting around.
Well, no, because there's still, we're too done other, I mean, if you don't like, we're not going to start a job and then leave it. So we right now, although we're delayed, and I will necessarily work on, on that particular project. Those crews are being absorbed to help accelerate other jobs because as soon as the part of the beams and the other color pieces are ready, they're precast. As soon as those are available, we have to drop and bring those crews back to finish. The freeways are literally open and pushed over on.
So I think I can add to that. The last thing she wants to do is show up on Cascade Road Bridge, get traffic control set and then have, be obligated to those projects and have to stop work there and pull up.
Yeah, we wouldn't.
I need to quote you with a little picture in the next newsletter article when I eat crow.
It's. So to answer your question, presumably the second contractor does not have other projects with those.
How do we guarantee you've known about this project since May?
Well, so have they.
Right, but they were not, they did not give, we didn't give them the contract though. You have had this contract since May.
No, I've had the contract since, since July.
Okay.
Basically didn't get the contract until July to be able to know what's going to be.
To timeframe it.
Yeah, we had a meeting within.
And we've been, and we've been in constant communication. Once we got the contracts, got them to her, she's executed on her. And but once we met with Eric in person at the job site, she, she left with the contract.
Okay. So my point though is you've known about this more than a new contractor would. How can we guarantee they're not going to get this as a contract and then all of a sudden have issues as well?
Both contractors have the same information. They both bid it at the same time. Second.
But he hasn't been planning this project. The second Anlon.
They did originally when they bet.
We're, we're, we're a smaller contractor, barely, barely big, but not as big as.
So that's why presumably they have different or more crews that do.
Yeah, the, the other contractor had the capacity when they bid it, just like Heather thought that she did, and they're, they're larger to absorb. Various things and my understanding is, you know, they have the capability to start in October, but there are costs.
Still not going to finish until next spring.
But the, the roadway would be finished this year.
Okay.
You'd have all of the traffic before Christmas and then next year they would come back to do, to do work on the sidewalk. So there'd be minimal disruption next, next season. It would just be for the, the lighting and electrical.
Road project completed.
Road portion of the bridge, yes.
Next year, their follow-up is only for.
Outside the road.
Okay. Your proposal is doing one half of the road this year and then next year doing the other.
I was proposing a very conservative to ensure that. We didn't get further, if we had further delays, I wouldn't anticipate. Because frankly, it's about another month almost. And the delays have continued for out of M dot's quality assurance of this precaster. So it's another month that I still have the other information that we're able to start.
So hypothetically, Heather, if we're, we're. Creeping up on, on September right now. So we're, we're five weeks out from October. In, based on your revised schedule, your revised small schedule, you had it, did you have a November start?
We were going to start in November because that way I could guarantee that by November, I know that these projects will be enough, weighted enough with the delays that I can staff this. If we could start earlier, we will certainly start earlier and if we can put more people on, we certainly will start earlier. I provided at least a conservative schedule. And we are always aggressive when it comes time to, to make upward time if we're allowed to, but I couldn't guarantee that. I still can't do this day.
Is January like a no for sure? You know how last year was extremely mild in the winter?
So we discussed potentially if it's a mild winter, we have other options to deal. We did say that I would hold and I would absorb any winter costs, which typically could. Increase contract or concrete pricing for hot water. I would have to do what I would have to do for cold water protection, which is blanket the concrete. And we would take other countermeasures for the cold water related.
At no cost.
No cost.
To the township or the G D.
Conservatively, we can maybe get done further in the spring. I presented them the schedule to take the exact same amount of days that were provided originally from the big time. When we anticipated that we would get contracts, since we didn't get contracts in June or July, you've got to be in, that's two whole months that we were originally figuring a schedule. That's why I showed it all the way out to August. It took the entire time. As conservative, but we would certainly be motivated to get out of here as early as we, as we possibly can before Memorial Day next year.
August is unacceptable to me. I got kids walking across that bridge all summer.
I like.
No, we would not, that's what I'm saying. We would not, we would not need to go all the way to August. I was giving the exact same number of days that were allowed at big time.
Davis.
In completion to show the final end. We would have full motivation to be able to start in March and be out of here before Memorial Day on the second phase.
So you're not going to start this project? What day are you going to be finished, everything?
Conservative but realistic.
I simply, if we, if you guys allow us to split the job, we do part of it this fall and part of it next spring, we would certainly be out of here before Memorial Day.
So, second question. All of, you're still waiting for these parts for your other projects. What's the option of potentially starting sooner and getting this done sooner this fall if you don't have crews working elsewhere because of the project or the parts aren't available?
Crew has been dispersed and accelerating other projects to help facilitate someone that project, those two projects, do you have the, the beams and the culverts? We can take other people from those other projects and put them on this one, those ones to accelerate those ones to get the thought of this.
But you still don't know when that's going to be, is what you said.
Until the state releases.
So you, and you, just to make sure, you don't want or you can't start our project because you know immediately when that stuff comes available, these crews have to leave this project and go to those.
And I want to get found who starts and leaves.
Right, well. Right, but, but knowing that also. And not knowing when the parts are going to be available for these other projects, they might not be available until next spring.
I, that will not happen. You know, there's two freeways.
Major freeway. They've, they've got to be open to traffic to by November fifteenth, so.
Okay. So, so that's.
And my Cascade Road Bridge has to be safe for pedestrians and motor vehicles in November.
What?
Regardless of promises made or promises not kept.
What, none of these, is there some, none of these signed to lock this in that may not have been before?
She has the signed contracts. They are not in her possession this evening, but she could deliver them tomorrow.
Just, just to clarify, the solution, we're looking at, it sounds like here, option one, it's from your analysis. And the bid stays the same. We don't pay any extra. If, if we, if we'd say, start when we can in the fall. Finish by May thirty one of next year. The price stays the same. The quality stays the same. We don't do any cost-cutting measures on a cheaper fence or aesthetics. Everything stays the same. What we've changed is the end date to no later than the end of May of next year. With no additional cost increases. Is that what we're talking about? Option one?
Well, depending if there's a, a design issue.
Well.
But this is as is.
Is there a design issue?
There, if we change how we're going to do the. I didn't want to sit there and say, there's always, you guys.
Unforeseen circumstances.
There's parts of spec what they say that if you have these circumstances, you're allowed for extras or things like that, right? That's what I mean.
Does it make sense to look at how Anlon proposed to start, leave it, get the road part done? This is.
Going to try to do the same thing. It's, it's what I'm not going to. I was not going to be as aggressive in case the delays on the other projects. If I am able to do the same thing, I can certainly work out and have the same exact solution.
Because, because I think that, just thinking of the residents, there's two pieces. One, it's the, the completion of it because of the safety issue of the people crossing the bridge. But the other, maybe even the bigger part is the amount of traffic that goes over that bridge that wants to know when this is going to happen, when it's going to be finished. How long's the road going to be shut down to one lane on one side or the other? And I think that's an important part too. So to hear you say, well, potentially we could maybe finish the road part this fall, have that all done. So, you know, snow removal, all of that can happen throughout the winter. And then in the spring, doing the other pieces to me seems like a better idea and having it done before Memorial Day.
One of the concerns I would say is that the other second bidder is trying to do both sides at the same time and at the exact same time. I would say at that point in time, the pedestrian access would be cut off. The rules I had was always maintain one sidewalk and four.
Yeah, and, and I think that that's a difficult piece to, to think it's a good idea maybe. Because both sides of that bridge are open. Where does the. West side of that bridge go to? It goes to a neighborhood. Nobody can cross that bridge and then cross Cascade Road. So there's no option for people. If you close down the east side of the bridge. Those people just can't cross the bridge. They can't cross beforehand across Cascade Road with no crosswalk in the middle.
Problem regardless of when somebody builds it.
Right, yeah, right. But I'm saying it's. That's why we're doing it.
Heather does make a good point though. The. Anlon's proposal would be to do both sides at the same time. There would be no pedestrian access during that.
Oh, and that would be when this late fall? I think that, but that's the thing though.
Through December.
If you close, what matters the most truly is you can't cross either side without the other. If you come from one side or the other, you can't cross. You should not be cross, crossing Cascade Road without a crosswalk. That's how people die.
Well, there's, there, there's proposals and that's what, to their point earlier, and I told them I have other ideas, but I wasn't going to necessarily want to disclose them because if I disclose them, I'm not chosen. Or we have to give this job, I've literally handed my.
Ideas.
My ideas, you know, proprietary ideas to my competition. There are things you can do.
But they laid theirs out, so feel free to. I'm, I'm following what you're saying. Yeah. So if you only did do one side, there might be something you can do to. Facilitate pedestrian traffic across the bridge.
Try to minimize the impact.
Heather's a very cooperative contractor. Both myself and Dan have a long, decades-long history of working with her and on, in completing successful projects.
She's not that old.
Crossing and getting them across safely.
What's, what's important to me is the end date. Are you willing to put some skin in the game so you don't just give me a date today and then miss it by three weeks later?
So the intent is, is we would start, if we start earlier, we won't certainly ask it earlier. But I will start in November because I know that I will have other crews from across the state available by that time as well. Start in November. We have a six weeks time period and we move down to four. On first phase. And that gives me ample time in case there is bad weather, in case, in, in rehabs. Keep in mind, rehabs are always a funny animal because you don't necessarily know what you're going to get into. We're literally exposing something that passed work. So I tried to make sure there was a, a buffer so that, you know, you guys understood. That we're not just trying to accelerate so quickly and then we find problems that you have to repair and fix that are unknown at this time. We should be.
And we've already been proactive by the three of us and Eric meeting on the site and looking at some potential issues that we could mitigate before we get started.
I just don't want you guys standing here the first week of June telling me, well, you know, we can't, you know, and it's going to be like about July fifteen. I don't want to hear that. So.
The plan was coming November, it'd be done before Christmas on the first phase. So that first part was done. And then we should have enough mild winter enough during, when we have enough where we can handle the weather for that part of the snow removal, etc. On that. Hopefully we have a mild winter. Each started getting marched to the other side. That side, the other side has more work to it. It'll give us enough ample time, the weather and other conditions will be done before Memorial Day.
See. We'd want you to update your schedule to reflect that.
Yeah, we give a conservative. Conservative window.
Um. What you, what direction? So. Do we have to take action?
Uh, yeah. So the reason I brought this very nice, Eric's not here. He had a pre-planned commitment. But this, I know how important this is to the Board of Trustees and to the, to the citizens. So with having three options on the table and having Spalding here to present it. We wanted to present everything to you so that when we make an informed decision, we can let the public know and we can work with the contractor to aggressively hit this. So with that being said. I know this is under the special presentation section, so I would defer to Laura if we can actually take a motion, but if there is an option on here that you guys like, then I would. Like to see some sort of consideration for one of the options tonight.
I don't see any reason why you couldn't make a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we, based upon the recommendations from our engineering team. And Davis Construction, who's committed to keeping the current bid. That we select option one with phase one and phase two to be completed by the end of May of twenty twenty five at the same bid price. Per the specs that have already been provided to Davis Construction.
Shipley supports that motion.
Any further discussion, questions, comments?
I just have one that we work together on some sort of statement and notification to the public so that we have a joint message that I can put out there to, to the community. In regards to the, like whatever action's going to be taken.
We will follow up, you know, stand up the R.
Yeah.
Um, Grace, she's willing to deliver the contract. Her, she signed the contracts in the, how many copies? Five copies? Whatever. Where would you like those to go?
Township admin building office.
Okay.
Myself or Jade?
Okay. Okay. Do you know where the township?
Oh, but they're not here. You don't have them.
No, I, I got called for an emergency job site. This afternoon and I walked out.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Yeah, admin building on Tahoe. We can get you that.
And you're going to want to revise that schedule accordingly as well, pending, pending the motion.
I don't know if I can get a bar chart to you tomorrow, but I can definitely update you as soon as.
Yeah, just even if it's just broke down.
Okay, I can write it all.
Well, that, that'll be part of the contract. So we talked about. Liquidated damages, they'd be enforced from the schedule that's included in the executed contract. Well. You provide the schedule and we're going to hold you to it. That's what I tell them. That's what they're telling us.
These are recorded. So we're good.
Yeah.
Done to my ideas.
Yeah, so make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. Awesome. So that's, anything else?
Sorry, I probably spoke at the wrong time.
No, it's good. Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to choose option one, bait option one. The existing contract. All in favor?
I.
Poked. Motion carried. Thanks. And thanks for coming.
No, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
And we, thank you.
Have a great day.
You, too. Article five, public comments. Anything on, now's the time to comment, anything that's scheduled for tonight's agenda that doesn't already have a public hearing. So that would be comments on the township's proposed policy regarding fees, hotel license fee schedule, the levying of the twenty twenty four millage tax rate. Um, the appeal about the fence on Oak Brook is already scheduled for its own public hearing, so you can hold off on those. But with that being said, please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Welcome, Mr. Van Solkema.
Hello, Scott Van Solkema, twenty five seventy orange. I'm here about the hotel thing. Um, just speak, I have a question. You have stuff in here in the ordinance that says no person, firm, corporation, or other entity may operate a hotel, motel, or extended stay hotel within township. And that an application has to be submitted no later than October first. I don't see anything in there about what if they don't? Like, is there any? Do you guys have a policy or procedure or anything like that if they just say and just don't submit anything? I'm assuming there'd be some sort of court filing or something along those lines, but um, also in regards to the inspections, it says inspections, the applicant should schedule the following inspection in advance of submitting the application for a hotel license. I believe, you know, words have meaning, and I think that should be, that should, should be shall instead, that they shall do this. Also, you guys have them scheduled for two hours blocks through June and July. Um, again, it should be a two-hour block, but in regards to that, going through the hotels, and again, the ordinances, you guys have to part of the inspections is that rooms must be kept clean and free from dirt, vermin, garbage, and rubbish. And I was up here back in, I think it was May, when you guys approved this, that, you know, some hotels, you know, possibly have more than a hundred rooms, some have less than a hundred rooms. How can you possibly go through every room in two hours of the building? Um, also, these inspection forms that you guys had, they're very, you have like one little line for notes. And again, part of the rules that you guys have is that, you know, um, clean sheets, pillowcases, towels must be provided before a guest may occupy a bed previously. I don't know if you guys have seen, uh, videos or, you know, exposes like on Dateline or what have you during the COVID times, they were actually putting things on pillowcases, UV that could be detected with UV lights, and they failed. I was reading some of the reviews, again, part of the reason why you guys had these things or had this ordinance up here, you know, these are very shoddy hotels. Also, if you're waiting until June and July, will there be any inspections, especially for the very, very troublesome ones before then to at least get the ball rolling? So you can point out what these people are doing and or specifically not doing. You know, I was reading some of the reviews that today that were fairly recent of the roadway in and basically saying that there was, you know, pubic hair up on the, uh, in the shower walls and that there was hair in the beds and the sheets and things of that nature. I mean, obviously, we know there's a reason why you guys made this ordinance is to really sort of crack down on on the very low rent of hotels, and I'm all for it. I just think there needs to be a little bit more aggressiveness and or, um, just follow through for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will address, um, we can cover that when we get to that agenda item.
I figured. I just want to read them. Thank you.
Is there anyone virtually? Last call because there is not a public hearing scheduled for the hotel ordinance. Okay. Approval of the consent agenda.
Shipley.
Or discussion?
Shipley makes motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. The motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange to approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions. Motion or discussion?
I make the motion to approve the, uh, financial actions and Dave.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by treasurer Corstange to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, article nine, new business. First, zero six four twenty twenty four, consider appeal for type one special use permit for seventy one forty Oak Brook Drive Southeast. Before we open a public hearing on this matter, we will receive an overview of the appeal, um, including the zoning requirements that are at issue, the original applicant's request, and then the township's findings, both at the staff level, planning commission, uh, as well. Planning Director Hendricks is here tonight to present this item. So please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Um, as as the staff report says, there was a hearing on June seventeen for a eight-foot um, fence in the front yard, which per our ordinance requires a type one special use. Um, at that time, the planning commission had denied that request for a number of reasons that are listed in our staff report. Um, uh, and our ordinance allows for type one special uses for the applicant to appeal the decision to the board of trustees, which is a little bit unique. Um, but that is the way our ordinance is written. So that's why we're here today. So the applicant is requesting that the board of trustees review and appeal the decision that was made by the planning commission for, um, this fence.
Um, what is allowed? What's standard? The timeframe of that, too? Four feet is the standard, correct?
Yes, in the front yard, a four-foot fence is allowed by our ordinance. Um, I want to say that this one went all the way to ten, um, feet. But this applicant wasn't requesting a, you know, eight or ten-foot fence around the whole house. They were just requesting this fence for the front of their driveway. So this is a gate essentially that's made out of, um, transmit bars. So you could actually see through it. It's iron bars. I might be wrong on material, but appears to be iron bars. So they would have sections of this that were four feet, and then it would lift up all the way to over what's allowed. Um, the planning commission thought that they could meet the requirements or the the intent of what they were trying to do by providing a fence that was compliant with their zoning ordinance.
Four feet.
Yep, that was part of, um, the deny. Um, additionally, there there is a a creek that runs around the property. Um, the proposed fence, um, will not, this this came up, um, earlier. I just want to make sure this is clear. The proposed fence and gate that stops cars and other individuals from being able to come into onto the property via the driveway will not obstruct the entire property from access to the water, the body of water, the creek. So this isn't going all the way around the property and obstructing all access to the creek. This is only in the front yard. So I want to be clear about that. As as stated, the applicant per our ordinance has, um, ten days to appeal the decision. They did make that appeal originally. We wanted to have this heard on the fifteenth. Um, but that planning commission or that board meeting was canceled. So we did notice before we knew that 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 meeting was going to be canceled, and then we subsequently noticed again, um, so that it was actually noticed twice.
Question on that date, June seventeenth, planning commission meeting, denied the request, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking at the staff memo. The the applicant inquired about an appeal on June twenty fifth.
Mm-hmm.
And again, there's a, let's see, according to our own ordinance, the township board.
It's a written.
Basically, within, you may appeal the aggrieved party and appeal the decision within ten calendar days of the date on which the contested decision was rendered. So June seventeen plus ten is June twenty seventh, right? And we received their formal appeal on July eighth.
Mm-hmm.
They inquired about it within the ten-day period on the twenty fifth. I I just comment, I I question whether it's timely.
I would defer to Laura, our counsel, on the timeliness of appeal. Um, what do you think, Laura?
It's like this is the first I've seen.
You're on the spot. You're putting me on the spot here.
Yep.
It was filed within ten days. It was not. They inquired. Wired. Wired about the appeal process. So seventeenth was the hearing date. Seventeen plus ten on the calendar is what, twenty seven? And their actual application was filed on July eighth. So I'm not a mathematician. That's not ten days. So first of all, I would question whether it's even time and whether we even need to consider this.
Yeah, I admit I had not looked closely at the timing of that, Andrea.
Um, and just to be clear, we don't have a formal application for appeal. Um, so, and I don't have the email right in front of me to be able to to read exactly what was said.
But our zoning does say it has to be in writing.
Do you have it in writing?
The the zoning, the, um.
Such appeal shall be made in writing to the planning director who shall, upon receipt of the appeal, provide notice of a second public hearing. She did. And it was rescheduled. Uh, we don't have to get stuck on this, but just as a board member, you know, our ordinance is mean something. I don't think it was timely. That could end it right there, but. Sorry, I'm just playing up your ordinance provision.
Section teen, section seventeen.
Point zero four, point five.
So my feeling on this, Andrea, is, um, first of all, since the planning commission denied it on your recommendation, um, while they have the right to appeal, I feel like you recommended denial for a reason. Also, in the planning commission minutes, it states, um, exception at the end of article seven, exception to maximum height is not recommended as building in compliance would accomplish the same goal and granting permission would set precedence. The the fact that the fence doesn't even go all the way around the property, to me, it makes it pointless to allow an eight-foot fence that at some point with spires makes almost ten feet. So I'm recommending denial.
And before we get to the deliberation.
Can't get there yet. We should do the public.
Yeah, I move going to public.
Yeah, yeah, we can't. We, yep.
Very mature.
I move going to public hearing.
Support.
Yeah. Clerk Slater, please call the role. Sorry.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Lusprance.
Yes, so we are now in public hearing. Anyone wishing to, we can hear more from counsel and planning director Hendrick. Um, but now is the time for anyone wishing to make public comments on this issue, too.
My name is Dan Herman. I'm an attorney at Rose McKee, and I represent Bonnie Miller, the property owner and the appellate, uh, or the applicant, I'm sorry, on this matter. Um, if it's okay, we'd like to hook up to show a couple of pictures because I think that might help the board, uh, see and understand kind of the uniqueness of this property and what is actually going on in this case.
Do you have any insight, too, or any opinion on the timeliness of your appeal?
Um, I got involved a little later in the case, but I believe Ellen Fandrea, it was assisting earlier on, was told that she had thirty days.
During the planning commission meeting, I was told that I had thirty days to file an appeal, and I started the conversation within that ten-day range with the zoning staff. And then I have the receipt, I have receipt of an email that says, this email is, um, confirmation of your application, complication of receipt of your application. And so I was told that I was within the ten-day window after that mistake was verified to me.
Could you provide that email? We don't have to do it right now, but just.
Yes, I can. Are you all able to see my screen? Is that coming up for you?
Oh.
I don't think this is going to be set up as a.
No, it's it's coming up.
I was under the impression that the presenting screens were not on tonight because Biest is working tomorrow.
We have several pictures and diagrams within our packet that we're looking at at computer monitors. If you can tell us what you want us to look at specifically, we can pull them up.
Luckily, he has hard copies.
I have at least of this one, I have some extra hard copies. That would be helpful.
Show us what you got, what you want us to look.
We have several pictures in this one, but I don't think you have.
We do.
Yeah.
Big enough picture of it? Okay.
Yeah, plenty big enough.
Good. So I think, you know, kind of understanding the neatness of this lot is part of what needs to be understood and why this, um, request has been made, this application. If you take a look, it's a through lot. So in effect, it has two front yards. Um, one of which is kind of a primary, what you would consider normally would consider the full front yard on Oak, uh, Oak Brook, where she sits at the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, and that is kind of that small, smaller piece up here under the zoning ordinances, uh, that consider the front yard. Okay? But back here, because we're on, um, the other road, Shag, Shag Mark, um, is also considered front yard because it's a through. Now, what make, part of what makes it a little different and unique than you normally think of an, uh, a front yard is, uh, not only is there no curbs, cuts, or access or anything like that, this is a very steep embankment that goes down, goes down to the river. Nobody, um, you know, it's it's just, it's bacon back there. There's no real, uh, neighborhood or anything like that. Neighborhood is on the other side of the property. Okay? So what she was proposing is requesting is that across the front of her driveway that she would have a gate um, in that down both sides of her property lines to the, um, river, that she would have a six-foot-high fence. So that would prevent access from the primary areas that come from the neighborhood and so forth onto her property.
Four foot would also prevent that access, correct?
Not necessarily. So basically, the other unique issues about this property is that there is water features on it. There's the stream in the back. And there is a detention pond on there that fills and has water, depending on how much rain we've had, given time. These, um, pose concerns, uh, to Bonnie Miller because Bonnie Miller has limited, uh, capabilities of getting around her property, monitoring her property, and seeing what's going on at her property. But she has seen kids on her property in the past, which gives her anxiety and concerns because she does not want any children being hurt on her property, particularly in the water, um, which basically is an attractive nuisance. Um, you know, kids see water, they want to go to water. Put a four-foot fence, kind of defines the boundary lines of the property, but name you one kid that's not going to go over a four-foot fence.
Do you know, you said attractive nuisance, and the classic example for an attractive nuisance is a pool.
Right.
A shiny, clean, attractive swimming pool for a little kid, right? Do you know what the state code requires for a fence height around a pool?
They require, yes, at least.
Four feet.
At least four.
So you suggested it could be negligent on someone's end to not do higher than four feet, but in theory.
I didn't say it could be necessarily negative.
In your, you did. You mentioned negligence in your letter, but the state requirement for a pool fence is forty-eight inches. That's four feet.
Right.
And I would say that's a classic and more, uh, relevant example of an attractive nuisance than a creek
that runs through.
In a wooded property in Cascade Township.
I I also.
Try to find a big piece of property without a creek in Cascade.
With this property, also take a look, the, she, except for the front, the areas that are labeled front yard, she's allowed to have a six-foot fence as it is. The only because of the unique shape of this, if you look, it's a little bit in the back going to the creek here that she would be, because it's also classified as front yard and what would normally be viewed by most people as backyard. Um, be able to put a six-foot fence there. Mostly rest of the way down the sides she can, except for a little bit up in the front.
But this is a massive gate, an ornate gate that opens up to a driveway. I mean, that's a front yard. An eight-foot ornate steel or metal, that that's a front yard type thing.
It is a nice gate.
I know, but I want to clarify something.
That's a front yard. You don't put ornate gates like that, that the main entrance to your home on the back.
Right. I'm saying that is the front yard that she's asking for. Other parts that are classified by zoning as front yard are actually, most people would say are backyard.
But but to clarify, this is a six-foot fence around her whole yard.
No, it's not around her entire yard.
That that back to the creek.
So in her. Uh, so in her back facing yard and her front, I think when Andrea spoke, she made it sound like it was a four foot fence with just a large gate. It's not, there's parts of this fence that are six feet, correct?
Yes.
There's no part that's four that you're proposing, right?
Right.
So it's in the gate itself is eight with an additional one foot nine inch.
Which I think is different than what Andrea said when she just presented this. She, she presented as if it's a four, it's not, that's, which is. The original.
Why not? If you're so concerned about safety, why would you not do the entire? Property to ensure that, you know, you say that it's four isn't adequate. So you want six and then eight feet for a ga- gate, but then and the the threat is danger to children with water. But you're not fencing it all off her property. And so you just don't go through that part of the fence. I mean, it seems like if safety were the real issue, you'd want to truly fence off. The parts that you can access water, not just in, not just a front fence with an ornate gate.
It, the, the fence goes across front and goes down the sides to the, to the creek. So in the neighborhood is over here on the front side or by the gate side. So that is blocking off the access on her property all the way down to the creek.
There's a natural barrier from the, um, from the, uh, it's probably Shag Bark. I think it's almost a twenty foot elevation change there that creates a natural barrier that prevents the need from having a. A fence on that side of the property. And I believe there's already a guard rail on the road as well.
Well, that's not, if you're concerned and you're saying kids can easily jump a four feet, the guard rail's a lot easier than that.
Sure, but they would have to then unfortunately tumble over a far distance. So you guys are talking about some pretty motivated kids.
I think we also have to take a look at, I mean, this is obviously under a special land use permit that we're requesting, not a, a variance. That the, the ordinance anticipated that there's going to be lots, there's going to be shapes, there's going to be circumstances that justify. Going away from like four foot fence. And what we're saying is in, even when the staff reviewed everything, if you look down their criteria, they basically said, yeah, they met every criteria. But we still want to recommend against it. Just under the zoning enabling act, when you meet all the criteria for special land use, you should be getting the special land use. And so that we're. This is not a, an extraordinary request for somebody who's had some concerns about. Her property and the how kids accessing it and the dangers that are on her property. She's just asking, you know, from a four foot fence to a six foot fence mostly.
Everything we do sets a precedent. Everything we do sets a precedent and everybody wants themselves to be the exception.
The, that's what the special land use permit is about is the exceptions.
Yeah, and everybody thinks that they're special. Everybody thinks they're special, literally.
The, the planning commission has granted these exceptions to protect hostiles. And it's granted to protect trees from deer.
Invisible.
Somebody can't protect their children on a, uh, standing water and creeps.
You, you cited, uh, I think it was the Rockford Construction rep at the planning commission said. The concern was seven, twenty seven children and then the neighbor that showed up said four children. That's a pretty big difference.
Any children. It's in, in the, that varies over the years of who's in the neighborhood.
If you're using that rationale of paranoia, then we better fence every single property in this township and kids shouldn't leave their homes. Because they, you have any examples of actual danger? I mean, this, this is just like.
She has seen children on her property.
Right, but look at the, look what she's proposing. That's not a safety fence. That's a, don't drive in my driveway type beautiful ornate. East Grand Rapids fence and four feet, if that's the, the state code to protect children from swimming pool. I would think four feet would be adequate and and alleviate your concerns about negligence and liability. For a creek or a pond.
State code does not necessarily set negatives.
No, it sure as heck is relevant for liability issues, which is what you brought up in your letter. If the state code, if you had, then that meet you, a four foot fence, if that's code, that a hundred percent is relevant for liability and negligence. Absolutely.
But it's, it's not. Determined.
With luck making that argument that you should have, should have had a six foot fence. Neither is your position determinative. We're not boxed in a hole. Based on.
I'm saying is that it is a four foot fence provides minimal barrier, or a six foot fence provides much better.
Then let's just spend the township.
Particularly younger children. I mean, obviously an older child, if they're determined to get over a six foot fence, they're going to get over a six foot fence. But younger children are going to be prevented and deterred from getting.
A younger child would also be deterred by four foot.
Necessarily, they're easy, you know. They can get over a four foot fence.
Well, Madam Supervisors, I, I, I think we've let the applicant make their case. I think it might be useful to get additional public opinion or a public hearing because that's what we're in.
You just got a harder, um, because you're an attorney, so. You made, your letter was very, uh, you're pretty sure of yourself in your letter.
It's. It just seems like we've met all the standards that require for a special land use permit. And I. It, it seems like we've met them and they should ought to be entitled to special land use.
I don't see anything different that you raised tonight based on, other than what the original application said, but any other people wishing to comment?
The planning commission adequately addressed the, the odd shape of the lot. That would require what essentially is functionally a side lot that does not have any street frontage and only faces a neighbor yard. Um, to, to require that that side lot in, in effect have a four foot. Fence only, or I think our request is very much in line with what the zoning staff recommended. That we be allowed a six foot gate and fence contiguous throughout the areas of the property that we're requesting. And I think that would, that would be something that we would find reasonable. So and we're, we're sorry for bringing such a big debate, you know, there was a lot of thought and effort and energy into the design. But, um, Bonnie and I have gone through, um, and you know, we just would like you to consider. But in the end, we're just trying to make something beautiful and provide a little bit more safety.
Any other comments?
I would like to make a comment, may I?
So you two are both, sorry, and just to be clear, you two are both the applicant's attorneys?
I'm the attorney. She, she was with the, uh, initially designed it and worked with it.
I'm a construction project manager.
Oh, you're Rockford Construction.
Correct, and I would like to point that, but there's twenty seven bags that they put together every year for the neighborhood. Um, children during trick or treating, and so that's where we got that number is the neighbor was only referencing the immediate two neighbors. Not the entire neighborhood, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Good.
We get that off to Mary.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Mary Harden Johnson. I'm a friend to Bonnie Miller. And that is what I wanted to clarify, because I heard, um, that there was only a person that had two kids or four kids. That you knew about, but there is twenty seven kids based up on for the, us two consecutive years. Mrs. Miller has provided wonderful goodie treats for their children. And I was told, uh, by one of our neighbors that they have twenty seven children. So we will always bring twenty seven goodie bags for those lovely children for two consecutive years. So that was that number thing for. That's what I want to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the? Appeal? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did. S- s- I move to close public hearing. Or.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Nordhook to close public hearing. All in favor? We are now back in regular session, uh, questions, comments, concerns. Deliberations.
I have a question for maybe planning director. How? How, normally we see fence heights under a zoning variance request, correct? Have we ever looked at a fence height under a special land use?
Has Cascade Township zoning ordinance used this? Yes, there have been fences. Height, um, additional heights granted through this language in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, but is this correct? I'm not, yeah, and I'm not saying what we've done in the past is correct, so I know we are looking at moving forward, doing the correct things.
Yeah.
Should this have been stopped at some point and said, this is not a special land use, this should be going under a zoning variant?
Yes, this has already been.
Because this is the problem I have, the questions that he's saying that we, that staff say we meet. Well, yeah, I could say I want to build, you know, an eight foot fence. Can you look at my, how many dogs I have in my yard? Yeah, I meet the dog requirements, but I don't meet the requirements for the zoning for the fence piece of it. And I think it's frustrating to me that we're getting a comparison of not apples to apples. That we reviewed this under something that is not really applicable and the questions that were answered are not appropriate for a fence. So moving forward, I think we need to make sure these things when they are requested are put forth with the appropriate. Bucket.
Which you are on top of, correct?
Yes, like, uh, an applicant can make whatever argument. They want regardless if they're asking for a variance or. Uh, whatever land use request. They don't have to be applicable to what the ordinance has said, but the review that was done by staff was. Using the standards within our zoning ordinance and that's why.
For a special land use, though, not for a zoning fence variance.
Correct.
I don't think they have shown sufficient evidence to show, to indicate that the increased height beyond our four feet standard. Is required because of any unusual circumstances, unusual being the key word. And I also don't think that they've shown that building in compliance, they wouldn't be able to accomplish the same goal. And the flip, the what isn't being said or what isn't, nobody thinks that everyone wants to be the exception, but this is a. You open this and you just start opening these doors. That's not a road Cascade Township wants to go down. In front yards.
Well, based on the, um, staff's comprehensive report. And the six to one vote by the planning commission after having really vetted this, I, I move to deny the appeal.
Support. Uh, that's a motion, further discussion? It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by treasurer Corstange to deny the applicant's appeal for the special use permit.
Point of order, may I, I don't know, is it okay, Laura, Laura, for? Um, trustee Timmy to vote on this? Maybe everybody else knows that right now, but I just want to make sure because.
Official member of the planning commission?
Yeah. Did, did you already vote on this matter?
You did at the planning commission.
Yeah, you can't vote on the same matter twice.
He can't.
Okay, that's.
So he can't.
The, whoever that's official member is.
Okay, good to know.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Plug your ears, Timmy.
You don't have to plug your ears.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, sorry, trustee Shipley.
I, I simply have one question. Have they, have, have you guys received any comments, uh, from the neighbors? Yay, nay, concerns?
John, we got it, we got them today.
Yeah, there's comments.
Yeah, yes, we have. Oh, and, and both of the neighbors, um, recommended denial of the appeal.
And the, the planning commission had maybe more comments as well.
And, uh, said they had worked with the applicant.
I, I really take more credence in what the neighbors say than the planning commission.
Well, the neighbor supported the planning commission.
That's how they. I don't, I did not see any in favor, any comments in favor of it from.
That answers my questions. Thank you.
Um, so that was a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by treasurer Corstange to deny the appeal. For the special use permit. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trusty Castle.
Yay.
Sorry?
Yay.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook. Cannot vote, sorry. Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Losbryntz.
Yes, uh, so that appeal is denied. Next item zero six six, twenty twenty four, consider approval of the hotel business license fee schedule. Oh, I'm sorry. Adoption of fee policy, item zero six five. Finance director Nana Ricci is here this evening to present. Manager Smith, do you want to?
Yes, can I make a comment at first? So, um. Before Lorna takes over and explains, uh, the policy that's in front of you. When the township is assessing fees for various items throughout the township, sometimes you look at. Making sure that you're going to recruit, regroup, recoup all of your fees. And other times you're doing it for public safety, health and human safety. Um, so Lorna, this hotel ordinance generated some conversation around that, which can apply to all fees in the township moving forward. So Lorna is presenting a policy tonight in regards to that for us to consider as we move forward with setting a fee schedule. In addition, there is no official fee scheduled by the township that will be, we are working on that. And we will also include these categories within a permanent fee schedule that'll come before you at a later date.
You again?
I've been requested to be at the podium for this, so. Good evening. So yes, this is a, uh. A short document. But it is very impactful for how the township will go forward. And this, uh, fee policy and fee strategy would be the framework. That for any fees that the township were examining would go through this process. Um, fees were, as the RBA mentions. Uh, fees were a hot topic in government finance about twenty, twenty five years ago. Uh, Bolt V Lansing was a very important case that set out the structure for fees. Uh, fees are supposed to be regulatory in nature and not just to raise revenue. Um, they have to have specific items, um, to distinguish a fee from a tax. And so the policy that is presented for the board to consider. Uh, complies with the Bolt, uh, requirements. Uh, the policy in section three, and I apologize when, uh. Uh, we reviewed this at the personnel and finance committee, uh, this policy looked great because it was a draft. And now I'm looking and gee, I'm, we're asking the board to adopt this policy and it's just a lot of words on a page. Uh, so probably tomorrow we'll be, uh, working on, if the board passes this, we'll be working on, uh, putting this into the, uh. Uh, official policy structure. I'm sure Jade taught that. Anyways, uh, section three. Of the policy talks about how the fees, any fee would be developed. And that drives down to asking the question, well, how much does it cost us to provide the service? And so section three talks about which costs would be, uh, analyzed and how those would be analyzed. Um, and number four talks about, well, after you know how much the total cost to provide a service is. Um, what should the fee come down to? And sure, section four point one, you add all the costs. Four point two, you look at other revenue. That you may be bringing in for those fees. Um, can I point to one of those? A specific example used in the township right now? No. Uh, trustees and supervisor, I can't because not all the fees have been analyzed. Uh, but the four point two, um, and in the personnel and finance committee, I use the example of. Restaurant inspection fees. Now that's a county process, not a township process. But the county receives money from the state to support their restaurant inspection program. So it would be inappropriate to gather all the fees for that program. Spread those fees against, uh, I'm sorry, spread those costs. Against the restaurant owners. When half the project, half the, the program is being supported by the state. So we would net out any fee, any dollars we receive for program re-support. Um, and then we would come up with the net fee, with the net cost, very, the net cost. Section five. May, uh, it's a, a step farther than Bolt. I don't believe the Bolt decision talked about a, uh, benefit level. Uh, this is what I've seen, um, from a couple of different communities and it turns out I, I favored that. Uh, and that's, uh, looking at. Asking or answering the question, well, who's benefiting from this fee? Who's benefiting from this service? And the more global benefit there is, the less fee would fall to the applicant. And the suggestion of thirty three percent, sixty, six percent and a hundred percent. Uh, was developed through the personnel and finance committee.
Do you like that? Or does that sound okay?
Oh, excuse me?
What's your opinion on that? Is that?
Oh, I'm sure, yes, that's very reasonable. Um, yes, we can go further than that. And so that is before we talk about the next, uh, topic, which is a hotel and license. And so that is before we talk about the next uh topic, which is the hotel and license fees. This fee policy and strategy is being proposed for all fees of the township to be pushed through this process when we get to looking at every fee. Right now, we're looking.
No actual dollars based on this policy then, right?
Yes.
Versus developing actual dollars based on no policy and just winging it twenty years ago.
So people that come in and want to know what a fee is when we adopt this policy, you do the analysis to figure out what it should be.
Hmm, I would take this process, once you adopt it, and any existing fees, we would go through the process to evaluate those fees and bring any recommendations back to the board. If there is a fee that has been set in the past, that fee is not going to change because that's a board prerogative to set fees. But if fees are analyzed in the future, the, the how they will be processed would go through this. And then the resulting fee would be brought to the board.
Okay.
For adoption.
Excellent.
This is on you.
Well, this is really good to have some structure and to have an actual policy.
Thank you. That, that's, thank you, because that helps, that helps me too, because I.
Is very succinct.
Thank you.
This, this makes a whole lot of sense. I, I move to approve the fee policy. I appreciate all your work too, Lorna.
Okay.
And same with the personnel finance committee.
Shipley supports.
Uh, motion by trustee uh trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the proposed uh fee schedule.
Or fee policy.
Policy. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Don't go away. The item zero six six twenty twenty four, the um, consider the approval of the hotel business license fee schedule. Manager Smith, I'll hand that to you, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll eventually hand it over to to Lorna, but what's being presented to you tonight, there's a lot of information in your packet. Um, the last time that we talked about the ordinance uh at a meeting like this, it was to approve the ordinance and the direction was then for staff to go back and implement the ordinance. Um, I have to give a lot of credit to planning director Hendricks, who basically has put together the uh hotel license administrative policy, which is included in your packet tonight, which is exactly how we were going to attack the ordinance that was given to us. Um, it took a lot of staff time. Uh, planning department, building department, the fire department, the sheriff's office, the finance department, it was really all hands on deck. Uh, the zoning administrator as well was included. So we looked at everything, um, been through quite a few iterations with how we were going to actually administer the ordinance and enforce the ordinance. Um, I'll take the opportunity now to address some of the questions that were um asked earlier, because it, it's probably appropriate. But in the ordinance, it was, there are penalties for non-compliance. It's actually spelled out in the ordinance. Um, so that, that answers itself. Um, maybe there was a word that says that they may, but we inspections are going to be completed. That is part of this policy, these inspections. Fire actually does inspections currently. Um, the inspections are just going to become uh a little bit more detailed, and they're going to include some other departments as well to make sure that we are complying with the, with the the, the the intention of the ordinance and the, the policy. Um, in regards to dates, we have to start somewhere. I know there's a question on how are we going to get this rolling out? When are we going to get the ball rolling? Unfortunately, I mean, this ball has been rolling. This was one of the first things that I was tasked with when I got here. And it has taken us this long to get consistent, we're consistently working on this to get to this point, which is now we're at an implementation, implementation phase or stage. Um, and at the end of the day, the goal is not to be punitive. This is to get compliance. Um, we have a concern by the residents, we have concerns online, we have concerns from the sheriff's office and our public safety departments, but we are not out to be punitive with this. This is actually to get compliance, to have businesses that are in business to, I mean, let's, let's be real, businesses want to make money, that's why they're in business. But if they're going to go into a certain type of business, they have to make sure they're prepared to upstand, uh, be upstanding and comply with standards that are in place. So this is setting the standards. And with that, um, we are here tonight before with you, before you to request that you adopt the fee schedule, which is actually the last page of the packet. Um, it doesn't actually specify it in the RBA, but this is not a benefit level one, as you just passed. Fee, this is a benefit level two, if I recall correctly. So we are not proposing that we, we, we recoup all of our costs with this, these fees. There are some, we had to make some very general um predictions and estimations in regards to the time it's going to take us to complete the inspections, to make, to, for us to review the applications, and just for the overall implementation of this. We will have hotels that are going to comply, and they're going to be easy. And then we're going to have hotels that are not going to be easy, and the ordinance is set up to address all of that. And then the policy is also set up to address that. So by working with Lorna in this fee policy and the rest of the staff, that's how these fees are being presented to you tonight, and we're asking for those to be approved.
I really appreciate how the entry fee is reasonable, so it's, if the, all hotels, very fair, reasonable if you're going to do business. But then it's the additional through the first, second, third strikes for the violations, that's where that appears more substance. So it is narrowly tailored to focus on the several bad actors that, whose business model is basically drain public safety dollars by running a crime-infested halfway house.
And that it's the initial application is more than the renewal application.
Yes.
I think is very.
Yep.
If you are complying and doing it should be an easier process in thousand years. So I, I don't feel like working during business in any way with this. Um, again, it's getting a, a lot to do with public safety and public health, making sure that we have adequate places.
I'm aghast at some of the reports that we've received on violations of the fire department's found, just the fire department loan on inspections, you know, like alarm systems completely disconnected, uh. And if we don't do something to ensure that residents and tourists and occupants of our hotels are here on a safe business, and we have turned the other cheek, and I firmly support this. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, this is very well thought out, long overdue. I think Timmy started this a couple of years ago, so uh thanks for the diligence for everybody. Um, uh, there will, I think through one comment is there will always be enforcement issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we got enforcement issues on our pathways, or we have motorized vehicles on our pathways all the time. People speed every day on Twenty-Eighth Street, uh, the restaurant inspections, there's thousands of restaurants in the county. I mean, there will always be enforcement issues, but we now we have a structure in place. Um, and this is really well thought out and well vetted. So with that, I move to approve the um license fee schedule as outlined here by staff.
Shipley strongly supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley um to approve the proposed hotel business license fee schedule as indicated. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item zero six seven twenty twenty four, consider resolution for L four zero two nine, the twenty twenty four millage tax rate. Do you want this? I'm sorry, I didn't, do you want your papers or you're good? I'm, I know you don't have something to look at.
Hello. Hello, Lorna again, speaking for.
You're speaking for financial director.
For the, the assessor tonight, who, who's out on awesome training. Uh, this is an annual process. And every taxing unit has to approve an L forty twenty-nine by the end of September. And these are the documents that the treasurer's office uh collects from schools, um, Grand Rapids, uh, GRCC, Kent County. This is the, the, these are the forms that tax bills are based on. Um, say annual process, we may be back after the November election, asking the board to adopt an amended L forty twenty-nine uh for a library millage, but uh that will come later in November. Right now, these are the millages that the board approved during the budget process last year. Shut up.
I move to approve the uh millage rates.
Support.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel to approve the twenty twenty four millage rates. All in, oh, clerks later, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Westburns.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, Director Nenneri Chi. Item zero six eight twenty twenty four, consider resolution to approve POW M I, M I A recognition day. The Michael J. Bose, chapter eighteen of the Vietnam Veterans of America is one of three uh here in West Michigan that's working to increase awareness of the servicemen that are still unaccounted for in, from the Vietnam and also the Gulf Wars. Currently, we have one thousand five hundred eighty-two Vietnam-era servicemen and civilians that are still unaccounted for. The state of Michigan has forty-eight of those. We want to thank all of our veterans for their service and also those who are working locally on behalf of our POWs and MIA's. Is there any discussion?
Shipley strongly makes a motion to approve the resolution to approve the POW M I A recognition day.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerks Slater to, or excuse me, to, oh, to approve the resolution approving POW M I A recognition day. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange. The McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes, supervisor Westburns.
Yes, and again, thank you to the, this post and also all of our veterans for their service. Having no discussion items tonight, now is the time for public comments, um, whether the issue is on the agenda or not. Sorry, did I miss something?
What is POW day?
Oh, I believe it's September twentieth. Sorry, I should have said that, September twentieth. And there, I think there will be a, a chapel at one of the um, at the Michael J. Bose, chapter eighteen.
Yeah.
It's at the Grand Rapids home for veterans at two o'clock on the twentieth.
Right. Afternoon, Robert Cribbs, nineteen eighty Deerfield Court. The reason I want to be up here, as most of you know, I am running for school board. Um, part of what I'm doing, not only am I involved as a substitute teacher throughout Forest Hills, making sure I'm in every school in Forest Hills to know what's going on. I'm also just got my CDL and I am now a licensed bus driver for Forest Hills transportation, because transportation, as most people know, in Forest Hill is dismal. So if I'm going to be on the school board, I want to know what's going on in the departments. So when I ran two years ago, yeah, I was an outsider, they had kids. The last, last two years, I've been an insider. The other thing too, you've noticed I have been coming to a lot of your meetings. I also attend Ada's township's meetings and Grand Rapids Charter Township meetings. And the reason being is I heard at one of the uh township meetings that, oh yeah, Forest Hills does whatever they want, so it doesn't make any difference what we think or, or say. And that got me to think, that we've never had a board member or a member of Forest Hills schools in a community that we all share together. So one of my plans, and I have been doing, I've been going to all the meetings is to say, hey, you're going to have somebody that if I'm on the board, will be available for you to talk to, just like your commissioners, other people. That way, it's a partnership. We're not supposed to be Forest Hills here and the townships over here. So you'll have somebody that, Robert, this is something we're concerned about, what's going on in Forest Hills. One of the biggest issues, what you may have heard, was the cell tower that was going to go on Eastern's grounds. And that affects Ada Township, and that's where the upset feelings were. They didn't know anything about it, what with the plans. So if I am on the school board, you will have me as kind of a liaison between our school districts and the township. So I just wanted to let you all know that, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there, Skyman's Alcoa again, and I'm just going to continue to keep bringing up uh Peace Street. Again, I don't know if you guys are around with the very scattered downpours that happened over the past few days. I don't know, like I was at my house here in the village, driving to Meyer, it's downpouring, I get to Meyer and there's nothing. So, but why I keep bringing up Peace Street is again because of the pathway that gets flooded out with dirt and gravel and debris because of the dirt road. I know that that path is scheduled, I believe, to be replaced in twenty twenty-six. And while they're there, perhaps we can do something to address the road. Um, also, I've talked to some of my neighbors and numerous people, when they're coming up Peace Street from Thornapple River, they just blow that stop sign. And it's also very hard to see because there is a lot of trees and vegetation on that corner there. So if you're heading up Orange to go up to my house from Cascade Road, heading up past the pet cemetery, people just run the stop sign and make the left, trying to avoid the light at Cascade Thornapple River. So again, my proposal before has been to pave it and to make it a one-way street. Because have you guys have said before that a two-lane won't, i- i- it's too small or what have you, but let's make it a one-way. So that's my thing. And again, I'll, you know, the the, the, well, was it the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so I'll keep coming since you guys did do stuff about the sidewalks and around the village, which do look nice regarding the ninety thousand dollars that was spent to repair those that were cracked, heaved, sunk, what have you. So I will continue to keep coming and bringing that up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Niketza Ros, twenty ninety-five Berwick. Uh, three things that I'd like to address, and perhaps you can address them during your comments section. Um, the first is uh that Cascade signed a jewelry hotel, um, manager Smith, I think you're going to look into that agreement and determine if there was anything we could do about that. Uh, the second thing is, a few months ago, there was discussion among the board members about the deer population and how there is going to be an effort to try to cull that um population, but working with other communities in the county. Um, and I'm just wondering if there's any update on that. And finally, um, the rumor mill has that the director, uh, Mannion is no longer with us, and I know you can't discuss personnel issues. Uh, perhaps, though, you can talk about what the plans are for replacing her. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, either in person or virtually?
Yes, just a second. Jeff, you can talk.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Hi, um, I'm Jeff Long, um, I'm the general manager for the, the Sheraton, um, you know, from there, so I'm going to ask a question first, um, and it's not meant to come off rude, when to preface that. When the, the policies were written, were any of the past state general managers included or, or owners um in that process?
We can, we don't, we try not to get in the back and forth during public comments, but we can um respond during the board and the manager comments.
Okay, I, and the reason I preface that with the second question is, moving forward, and I know it's already, um, it's, it's already in place, so there's no changing that, which, which I'm okay with, and I, I hope I'm not one of those problem uh children. Um, is if there could be more manager and ownership involvement as this process moves forward to fruition? Because I think there's a lot of verbiage that as a hotel general manager, as I'm reading it, it's hard to understand um what the goal of certain pieces are and what you guys are trying to gain out of it, and how I can implement it on the hotel side. Um, there are some things that are very simple, clean beds, um, surveillance cameras, things along that line, but just some of it. So uh, my comment is just that if, um, as the, it moves along, if more of the general managers and owners can be included, I think that would really help with the, um, the rollout process and make it as. I think that would really help with the rollout process and make it as impactful as possible. So that's my, my statement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Manager comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. I will address some of the questions that came up in the last couple of minutes. So in regards to the hotel, we did not have any hotel owners that were, or general managers that were part of the discussions. This has been a two-year process held at public, items have been brought up at public meetings, public meetings have been held to go over the issues. Notice was given out. But with that said, we will work with each and every hotel owner on the implementation of this process. Planning Director Hendricks put together a webinar for all of the owners that was well attended last week, I believe it was, or the week before. Lots of questions came to us that way. It is recorded. We have that available for anyone that did not view that, but we do have that. And we encourage anyone to have, that they have questions to reach out to us at Township Hall and we will work with them on this implementation.
And the Sheraton was represented at that meeting, correct?
Yes, they were at the webinar. Correct. And the Sheraton is not a problem child.
No, if anything, it may have been at one point, but they just dumped millions of dollars into it, reinvested.
So I encourage you, if you would like to have a further discussion, please reach out to my office and I'm more than happy to, to, I'll leave you meet you at the hotel and we can have a discussion. In regards to the deer plan, we are working with the Kent County Road Commission. All of the local municipalities in Kent County have signed on to work with them on a regional study that they're partnering with Grand Valley State University on options of how to work on the deer population. It does not make any sense to work on that a community by community basis, because if we deal with it, they're just going to go to Ada. If Ada deals with it, they're just going to come here. And so we all need to be consistent and there's no better champion that we have right now than the Road Commission. Jerry is pretty passionate about it. I don't know if anyone have seen him on the news, but he's talked on the news about it as well. To find out more information, I'm going to get a little ahead of myself, but next week, everyone's going to see the Cascade Connection delivered to their mailboxes. It should be in the mail on Tuesday, so probably the houses by Wednesday, Thursday of next week. And in there, there is a, a section where we address the deer in the plan. And it references back to a website that we have on our, our webpage that we have on our website. So there'll be more information and we're going to keep information updated there. So that's what's happening with the deer. In regards to the Parks and Recreation Director, yes, we had a vacancy in that position. I am pleased to announce that as quickly as it was vacated, we were able to fill that position. We had conducted interviews for another position that brought forth a candidate that, that really met the needs. So we were able to reach out to them and ask them if they wanted to come back in, have some further discussion. So I'm not ready to disclose his name as of yet because he hasn't turned in his notice to his current employer. This just happened, so I can say that we're looking to not skip a beat in the Parks and Recreation Department. And I'm looking forward to them getting started at the end of September. Couple of things, as I just mentioned, the newsletter is coming out next week, so make sure you look on that. One of the things that you will notice is on the very back page, when you get it, where your address is, there's going to be information for Heritage Festival, which is on September fourteenth from five to nine. That's going to be held at the new historic Stone House that the township purchased a few months ago. And it's on Orange Avenue. And we're going to have lots of family activities, live music. The museum and the chapel will be open. This is all about the heritage of Cascade and celebrating the heritage of Cascade. We're actually going to do an art exhibit in the Stone House as kind of an introduction to the public. So people can come into the Stone House, walk around, look at the artwork, partnering with an art nonprofit out of Grand Rapids. And there will be beer tent, beer and wine tent and food trucks. So it should be a really fun night. Oh, and pygmy goats. I can't believe I forgot about the goats.
You didn't, it's going to make the event.
That's the family activity. So definitely come on out. It should be a really good time. Keep our fingers crossed for good weather because last year it did rain. And I just want to thank the board for hearing the options on Cascade Road Bridge tonight. I know it's important to you. I know it's important to the residents. And this all kind of came to fruition over the course of the last week. And some things, as she said, are out of our control. But we, I wanted to make sure we had the dialogue and the discussion so that everybody knows what's going on. And we're completely transparent with why that, that project is, is moving along in the way that it is.
Thank you for having them in person.
For sure. With that, that's all I have.
We keep getting questions or can you give an update, the status of Tuffy and
Yes.
Kind of rough timeline?
Yes, so I will have a, I should have a, should have a definite demolition date by the end of next week. I've worked with a company, we were struggling to find a company that could come in and take out not only just the building, but also the foundation. So what we decided to do is come in and take down the found, the building itself, leaving the foundation where there is risk for more contamination discovery. So we figure when we, it'll clean up the site, we'll be able to, to basically make it look like a flat, flat space. And it'll look much more attractive than it does right now. So I should have a date for that next week. And as soon as we do, encourage everybody to follow the projects page on our website because all the projects that Cascade is working on currently has all the projects listed there. And we keep that updated on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. So it's right at the top of the website, it says projects. Click on it and you can see most everything going on in Cascade and it's always changing.
We don't have the design concept yet
No.
for the Tuffy site to roll out for community feedback, but that should be in September also. Late September.
Late September, hopefully.
Great. Any board comments?
If we're John stands up. I had a resident ask about whether we can look into, he's a jogger, he lives in Hidden Hills. And he told me that a lot of motorized vehicles use a bike path. And he's almost been hit a few times. So whatever we can do to look into enforcing non, non-motorized vehicles on the pathway, he would appreciate. So I told him I'd bring that up tonight.
Yeah, I can do a quick update on that if you'd like. At the last Pathways Committee meeting that was held in August, that was a topic of discussion. And we are addressing that, looking to see how to enforce that. I shouldn't say how to enforce it because it's going to be really hard to enforce, just like speeding vehicles are. But we're looking at bringing forward an ordinance to the board to set the type of motorized vehicles that can be on the pathway. And when I say that, that's like e-bikes, there's different levels of e-bikes. And then also what the speed limit should be. In addition, I've talked to the Township Manager in Ada because anyone that's using the pathway does not really know when they're leaving Cascade and, and going into Ada. And it doesn't make sense to have two different sets of rules. So we're trying to coordinate our policies and procedures on pathways across municipal lines to make it better for the user. And then also just to be more consistent in the Sheriff's Office is, in talks with us on that as well.
I'll share that with him. Thanks, Jade. Sorry, Chad. Always standing up and thanking people for being here and persevering all the way through the end of our meeting. Sometimes it gets a little bit on the conservation or never mind.
Grumpy?
Grumpy, yes, thank you. And it was great to see the other people here too, although they weren't always satisfied with what we decided.
Even though it was the right decision? Okay, I'm just kidding. Anyone can run for the board. Further comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee McDonald, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It looks like.
Motion carried. Thank you for coming and sticking around the whole time.